Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Tuckfield. I'm the chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Today's date is January the 6th. The time is 6:30 and I'm calling this regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. That's the first item on our agenda this evening. The second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Couple of brief pieces of housekeeping before we get too far in. Typically, we do our election of the officers on the first meeting of the year. We are not at full capacity for our regular members, so we are postponing that tonight. In lieu of having our elections, we're going to hold as-is and I'll be acting chair this evening. Also with that, our secretary is not here this evening. I had been calling rolls, but Mr. Piper has graciously agreed to call rolls for us, so we can make it, so I'm not doing all the talking this evening. That being said, we're going to do the roll call and then the conflict of interest. Mr. Piper, could you call the roll for us this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DeCosta?
Here.
Member DeBruyne?
Here.
Member Faustic?
Here.
Member Piper is present. Member Tuckfield?
Here. All members or all positions are full this evening. I will also mention for the record that with the alternate and regular system, we have to have at least three regular members to achieve quorum, and we do have that this evening, as well as a full five-member panel. We're going to move on to item four, which is addressing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we're going to call the roll, and if any member has a conflict on any of the items before us tonight, please signify by saying yes, and if you have no conflicts, please signify by saying no. Mr. Piper, could you please call the roll?
Member DeCosta?
No.
Member DeBruyne?
No.
Member Faustic?
No.
Member Piper is no, and Member Tuckfield?
No was for me as well. That moves us on to item five, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any motions on this evening's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. DeBruyne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That item carries and the agenda this evening is approved. Item six is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. These would be for our meeting in December, the 2nd of December of 2021. Is there any discussion, corrections, or motions on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Very good. Motion by Mr. DeBruyne to approve them as presented, I assume?
Correct.
Very good. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. DeCosta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and those minutes are adopted. Item seven is old business. We have no old business tonight, so we're going to move on to item eight, which is new business. First item is a variance request from the zoning ordinance. We have three different variance requests here. I'm going to read out the sections and then the parcel ID. The relevant sections are 10.0704.a3a, 10.0704.d1, 10.0704.d3b. This is with regards to permanent parcels 0820-426-027, and Steve Rizzo is the petitioner. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Box. Could you give us the department review on it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you saw in your packets and as you see on the screen behind you, this property is the south portion of what will be the future Pitchford Park. This is the portion south of the drain. It's currently zoned R1, a residential, one family. It is vacant right now and does have a couple stub streets from the adjacent neighborhood stubbing into it on the south side. What the developer is seeking this evening, he is intending to develop this as a continuation of the neighborhood, essentially putting a cul-de-sac with eight lots on the property, cul-de-sac on the end of each of those with four units around it. In order to accomplish that, he needs the three variances that you saw on the agenda, that being a reduction in the minimum square feet required for a lot, a reduction in front yard setback, and a reduction in rear yard setback. So this is a proposed conceptual layout you see here, and again, I think this was in your packet as well. It is a bit of a difficult property with the drain adjacent to it. There's some area that may not be buildable there, and in order to accomplish some residential units, again, they're seeking some variances. And one thing I would point out, too, the property that is now going to be Pitchford Park is also residentially zoned, and, you know, in the past, it had been intended that these stub streets would have been continued up, and that continued to be developed as a neighborhood. So when something like this would be developed, those stub streets would essentially just be extended and stubbed once again until the next piece is ready. Were these stub streets to be extended and stubbed again, without having to put the cul-de-sac, they would be able to meet all of the requirements. It's actually the requirement of the cul-de-sac that's creating their hardship. So that's the need to have the smaller lot sizes. They have to meet the right amount of road frontage on a cul-de-sac because it's curved. It's slightly different than a standard lot, and because the lot size is smaller, it kind of reduces the footprint. That's why they're seeking the front and rear yard setback to make a standard house that would blend in with the rest of the neighborhood. In going through the internal review process, assessing had no objections, fire had no objections. Again, they're actually the ones requiring the cul-de-sacs as part of the fire code, so they have a turnaround space. You see the comments here. Engineering notates that the floodplain in existing location may require that these lots' sizes be restricted because of that, and in general, engineering had no concerns. Planning didn't really have concerns either. The site is designed to complete the stub streets. We don't like to leave stub streets there, so knowing that the other portion is going to be a park, there needed to be a solution to finish these streets off. I think the cul-de-sac option is a reasonable solution, but again, it does need these variances.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions for Mr. Box from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bruyne.
So if that cul-de-sac wasn't, what you're saying is if that cul-de-sac wasn't necessary, the bubbling out of that cul-de-sac is what's creating the necessity for those setbacks?
Correct.
So the distance, you have the other picture that had the layout? So the distance from like three, a house at number three and the house at number six are just, they're closer together by the amount of that variance, correct?
Yeah. If the street, the 60-foot street of Zoe Drive and 60-foot right-of-way for Carl's Drive were extended and not bubbled out like that, all of those lots would conform to the ordinance.
Okay. I'm clear.
Any other questions for Mr. Box? Hearing none is the petitioner in the audience tonight. If you are, please come forward to this chair here, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Hello, I'm Steve Rizzo.
And I'm Joel Bodway with Community Engineering, the one that prepared the plan.
Very good. If you could both give your address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
615-32 Huntington East Circle, Washington Township.
5805 24 Mile, Shelby Township.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have any comments to add to Mr. Box's presentation here?
I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing here.
All right. Any comments from the questions from the board? I did have one question, and this might be to Mr. Box and to the petitioner, obviously. It's a tight parcel and it looks like we're trying to utilize it. Were there any other orientations that might have utilized less lots that you looked at that would have accomplished the same goal and created conforming lots?
Yes, we did. We actually explored one other where we connected both Zoe and...
Carl's.
Carl's, yeah. You know, in doing so, but it, again, it pushed everything, you know, further into the floodplain, you know, and that's what we were trying to avoid is, you know, dealing with some of those floodplain issues. So it's in regards to, we could do the lots, but we couldn't do, we would have to have variances regarding the floodplain for the buildable area.
So you were maintaining eight lots and you were moving the road further north?
Correct.
Okay. Yes. And then I guess, just to Mr. Box, I believe this property would have been split as part of our acquisition and selling it off. Was there, and just to understand relative to the possibilities here, what was the thought at splitting it at this point and maybe not giving them a little bit more and maybe Van Tiflin can answer this as well?
The northern boundary of this proposed development is the drain itself, so giving them more property to the north wouldn't change the fact that the lots would still have to be restricted because it's all floodplain beyond what they're shown here.
And that edge is directly on the drain, not in the associated floodplain? Because obviously, we see elsewhere, people encroach on floodplain and they have to do cuts, and again, maybe this is not doable, but just trying to understand, they couldn't go any further into that, or it was, shall we say, not practical to go any further into it?
As far as engineering, I would defer to somebody else that might answer that question. I think you're correct. It's not, that boundary is not the center of the drain, but it's the edge of the floodplain area, it appears.
And Mr. Van Tiflin, if you'd be willing to answer the question, is that line the furthest they can realistically go? Is it the furthest they can practically go, or what, kind of where are they there?
Typically, we try and put the property line between developments, between properties, along the center line of the drain. In this case, it wouldn't have gained anything by adding more property to the parcel. The only way that you could have done a different configuration to try and make this work would be that U-shaped street that was mentioned earlier. I think you'd almost have to enclose the drain, and the state and the federal government don't like that anymore. That used to be commonplace, where you'd have a drainage closure through an entire subdivision, thousands of feet of draining, drain that was enclosed. They don't allow that anymore.
Isn't that what would have happened if we had carried on with the original plan and had the stub street go where the north side?
There was actually a plan for Brook Run West configured differently with a U-shaped street, and that one actually died because it needed variances that the developer wasn't willing to pursue. There just wasn't enough space, even with the drainage closure, and they had proposed a drainage closure, there still wasn't enough space without variances to make those lots work. In order to connect the two streets, you still have to have an eyebrow, which kind of does the same thing as what we have here, just on one side instead of on both sides, but the road is still too close to the drain, and there's not enough space between the edge of the right-of-way and the back of the lot at the center line of the drain.
Got it. And then the last question, and again, you might be able to answer this, Mr. Box or Mr. Van Tiflin might be able to answer this. The desire by the fire department for the cul-de-sacs, is that a code issue or is that a discretionary issue? In other words, did they say, "We want it in this case," or is it something that's bound in code that they would do regardless?
They're required to have a turnaround, and this is the minimum diameter for their turnaround.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. That being said, if there's no further questions, we are going to take it out to the public. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this, please come forward to the microphone here. You'll have, I've got to remember, I think it's four minutes. We have a couple of different time limits here, and if you could, please state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Hello, my name's Diane Vallatutti. We've lived in, my husband Gary and I have lived in Willowood Sub for about 24 years now, and we live directly on Drainer Drain. Subsequently, over the years, like when we first moved in, you could jump over the drain. It was very minimal, to the point, to the point now where it's about 15 feet wide. Every time we see a heavy rain, we're flooding, right? The back floods, this now, starting this year, since all the new subdivisions are going in west of us, we're flooding into the streets. I have some pictures I brought along with me to show that. Once the Clinton watershed fills up, everything backs up and it starts going upstream, and then that's when it comes through the sewers and floods the streets. The water management is just, you know, we've seen it really deteriorate, I guess I would say, through the years, and now you want to put a bigger house on a smaller piece of property, less water management through the ground, it's going to be going in the storm drains, into the drain, and filling up the watershed, you know? I guess that's the biggest, the biggest thing that we at our house, you know, have concerned about is the water management.
Very good. And Diane, if you could, yes, but just bear in mind, there's a step right here, can be difficult to see, and I wouldn't want you to trip. And when you get back, if you could state your address for the record. I think I didn't get it, so. Nowhere is it all.
This was like in December. I wrote on the back.
Okay. I'll pass them up and down.
And those are in June. That's when it flooded into the street.
Very good.
Obviously, when it floods into the street, now we have our driveway, our sidewalks, you know? Our streets are in ill repair in the subdivision anyway. There's a lot of cracks. The streets are falling apart, and now that we're dumping more water into there, and then it gushes out, and it's just...
New construction, too. More vehicles are going to be coming through messing up the subdivision more so, right?
The streets, yeah. When you bring in the big equipment to build these new houses, now the whole front section of the subdivision, the streets are going to be, you know...
More broken up than there.
Anyway, that's all we have to say about it.
Very good. And again, I apologize, but if you could just state your address for the record.
49496 Willowood Drive.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Yep, thank you.
And I should note for the record that typically what we do with comments, this is just a general thing, we listen to comments. We don't address them generally at the point given. We'll either address things later if we feel it is pertinent, or we take it under advisement. Everyone will listen, but that's the way we do it. We're not not speaking you to be rude, that's just our process.
I'm just saying, it's progressively been worse through the years, over the 24 years ago.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Galaski, 49348 Zoe. My house is adjacent to Lot 4. That's proposed up here. So I have a few concerns, comments, questions. The first one, the very first one that I have is about the property and how it was acquired. I was at the previous meeting about Pitchford Park and then that this property was sold off. I don't understand how that could have happened because the property was donated for a specific purpose, and now the property was sold by the township for profit. So I'm kind of curious about the profit thing, right? So I'm not sure what was made on the profit, but I'll lead into my next question. So the value that goes into this, what's going to happen to it, right? Is it going to the park, or is it going to some other specific use? So when we talk about the construction of these lots, these proposed lots, right, is this a ask or is it a tell? Are you asking us our opinion, or is this a tell? Is this done deal? Is my other thing. So if they are going to build, in which it sounds like this is going to happen, what's going to happen with all the construction trucks that are coming through our streets that are already crumbling? And I know we've gone to the road commission several times on this, and our streets are terrible. So if at least, can you bring a road grader in and smooth our streets out four times a year? Because if you drive into my subdivision, you'll see how bad it is, and it's horrible. So I would like to see some of these proceeds to go to fix these streets. And I live down this street, and it's probably going to get worse because you're going to have concrete trucks, you know, the riggers to bring in all the, you know, the machinery to put in the basements and all that, so that's going to be a problem. So I want to see, understand how that's going to be addressed. And then the easement between the homes, I'm not sure what those dimensions are. Is that public record? Is there a way I can get a copy of that? Because I want to make sure that the houses, when they're set up on there, that the lots where their garage or their street, their driveway goes up, it's not adjacent to mine. It'd be nice if it's offset away from my driveway, so I'm not, you know, side by side washing my car next to the next guy. It'd be nice to have some space, but I can tell by the way that lot is on number four, it's not possible because my driveway is where the, adjacent to the number four. So I'd like to see that, if that's possible. And the same would be true for the other neighbors, because Lot 8 is just like me. So I would like to see if that could be addressed. Let's see what else I got. So I see it's a Brook Run West. So what about the bylaws for Willowood subdivision? Do any of the bylaws, are they going to take place here? So is it going to be a full brick home? Is it going to be vinyl side? Is it a wig bomb? What are they going to be? You know, so is there a certain square foot footprint house that these are? I'd like to know what that is. Maybe that's addressed in here, but I don't see that. It just talks about setbacks. So I don't know what size homes, but if you look at our street and you look at the types of homes that are there, they're a specific size, and that was the same bylaws for the whole subdivision, so I want to know, are these bylaws taking place here? So those are the questions, comments, suggestions I'm asking for, so. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Seeing none and with no objections, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board. Some of these things I'm going to check with Mr. Box on, but one of the things I did want to mention with regards to this being a done deal, what I will say is that with regards to public comment, it is a public comment portion, so we listen to comments, and we are, our job is to determine what is pertinent to what we have in front of us and what is not. Typically, we hear a lot more concerns than maybe what we can address here, and so that's part of our job to sort of strain that out. I will say it's not a done deal, but I will also tell you that based on some of the technical things that we have to determine, I'll be honest with you, I've seen people walk away thinking it was a done deal. It's not. We do listen to it. We do listen to what you say. It is difficult, challenging, and we try to take into account the things that we need to take into account. So we'll go to Mr. Box for some of the other things, but I just wanted to make sure I addressed that, and I appreciate the question. And for those getting up to speak, I know it can be, it can be intimidating. We try not to have it be intimidating, and we understand it's complicated, so we'll try to explain it as we go along, and I just want to make sure. Mr. Box, I know there was some questions with regards to maybe some of the more building aspects of it. Is this something that, as a neighborhood, would go through any sort of the public planning process? How are these questions that'll be potentially addressed later?
Yeah, those are all questions that would be answered at a later date. When they come in with an actual site plan, as well as when they go through the engineering process and for final build, those materials and things like that would be established. With regards to the materials and what's required in the Willowood subdivision, again, it says Brook Run West. That was a name that was used when this was pitched a number of years ago. We're just kind of using it for lack of a better name right now. I don't know if the developer has another name for this, but they still have lots of options. They could choose to work with Willowood and try to join that HOA and join that subdivision. They could create their own. Those are items that will be answered in the future. They're not things that we're talking about this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Tuckfield, if I may?
Mr. Ola.
This was a purchase, just to answer the question, a couple of questions that he had. This was a purchase for $250,000. As the Board of Trustees stated in their meeting, the intent is that this, these funds will be put directly to develop the park. So he asked where the money's going. That's where the money's going, and a condition in the purchase agreement is to get consent from the subdivision association and be part of it. So that's the idea in the purchase agreement. So hopefully, that will answer the questions that they have.
Okay. And then two other things that I just wanted to make sure we covered. One, I think the one gentleman asked if this information was public information. I believe that through the FOIA process, all of our packets can be collected. It's not that hard. If you talk to the Clerk's Department, they'll work with Mr. Box, and I believe you can get all that documentation. And then, just to make sure that we're clear, we're looking at three variance requests tonight. The total square footage of the parcels allowable, and then the front and the rear yard setbacks. I know there was some questions about side yard setback. They're not looking at the moment. They're making no requests with regard to north and south distances to the homes. Right now, this is east and west, primarily affecting adjacent parcels within the proposed new subdivision, and then the square footage of the parcel. So not saying what we're going to do with it, but just so we're all clear on what the request is. All right. I think that was...
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
I just want the board to know that the homes, the reason why we're trying to get the variances is so we can build similar homes that are in Willowood right now. Our intention is to build, you know, what's there now, and even with three-car garages, which a lot of those houses in there do not have. So, you know, our intent is to make these just fit in that subdivision, you know, the way they look. That's why we're looking for variances. So these houses, you know, 25, 2600 square footers will fit on there, and I do have some renderings that I could show you guys of some homes that, you know, we're looking to put on those lots.
I think for us, it's probably outside of our purview. If you wanted to talk to other members of the community that are here, that's certainly something. And I appreciate you mentioning it. Sounds, from what Mr. Ola was mentioning, it sounds like part of the requirement here is that this parcel would be part of the neighboring association, so I would also assume if there are requirements in the bylaws, those would end up binding your homes as well.
And that's our intent. We're going to follow the Willowood and try to be part of that HOA as well. That's what the whole plan was.
And just to be clear, we've signed a purchase agreement. It hasn't closed. He's doing his due diligence and his part of this. He's trying to get his variances to see if it's something he can develop. If it's something he doesn't work out, then obviously, we won't have a purchase and we move on, but that's why, to say this is a done deal, no. I mean, the township is going to do their due diligence and take their positions based on natural situations. So if it doesn't work for Mr. Rizzo, then maybe somebody else will come by and do something different, I guess. I don't know if they could, but I think this looks like the only option.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Ola. With that, brought it back to the board. Is there any further questions, comments, or motions? And I believe if we have motions on this, because of the three separate requests, we should be making three separate motions on these items.
I'll make a motion, if I can.
Go ahead, Mr. DeCosta.
This is regarding to Section 10.0704.a3a, and I would make a motion to approve the variance to reduce the minimum lot size from 8,400 to... 7,325, citing the practical difficulty with the floodplain, the drain, as well as the requirement for the cul-de-sac.
Motion by Mr. DeCosta, is there support?
I will support that, Mr. Chairman.
Supported by Mr. Piper. Mr. Piper, could you please call the roll?
Yes, excuse me. Yes, Mr. DeCosta.
Yes.
Member Piper votes yes. Ms. Faustic?
Yes.
Mr. DeBruyne?
Yes.
And Member Tuckfield?
Yes. One point that I wanted to check with Mr. Box about, as an informational point that I think I'm going to go to him before we go to the next one. It's not a, not something we're going to be considering, but just a clarification. Any issues with water on the site is handled typically through engineering after the point of planning. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. And it was one of the questions I didn't get answered. It doesn't really have anything to do with us this evening, but it's the engineering's process to make sure that water is correctly shed and not shed onto other people's neighborhoods and correctly into the drain and all those.
Yeah. I feel like we bring this up every time, but there are many steps to the process. This is a very preliminary step. They still have to go through the planning, the site plan approval step. They still have to go through engineering and work with our water and sewer and the county's drain office, get all the approvals that they need. If those things can't be worked out there, then as Mr. Ola mentioned, this would likely go away.
Understood. Very good. And I apologize to the board. I just want to make sure we had that covered before we went on to further motions. Are there any further motions on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make another motion if I can.
Go ahead.
This will be in regards to Section 10.0704.D1, and it will be an approval of the front yard variance setback from 25 feet to 20 feet, citing the floodplain and the drain issues, as well as the requirement for the cul-de-sac. citing the floodplain and the drain issues as well as the requirement for the cul-de-sac.
Motion by Mr. DeCosta, is there support?
I will support that.
Supported by Mr. DeBruin, Mr. Piper, could you call the roll?
Member DeCosta?
Yes.
Member DeBruin?
Support.
Uh, Member Vostick?
Yes.
Member Piper, vote yes, Member Tuckfield?
Yes.
If I can, I will make a final motion as well.
Go ahead.
Alright, this will be with regards to Section 10 dot zero seven zero four dot D3B, and this will be for approval of the rear yard setback variance from 35 to 30 feet. And again, the practical difficulty citing the floodplain, the drain, as well as the requirement for the cul-de-sac.
Motion by Mr. DeCosta, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. DeBruin, Mr. Piper, please call the roll.
Yes, Member DeCosta?
Yes.
Member DeBruin?
Yes.
Member Vostick?
Yes.
Member Piper votes yes, Member Tuckfield?
No.
Alright, all three of those motions passed, thank you gentlemen for coming in. I hope you stay in good communication with everyone and the rest of the process goes smoothly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a comment about the water, about the, the water?
Yes, go ahead, I would normally, we normally do it later, but if people want to leave, I'd rather be-
That's what, that's exactly, well, with regard to the flooding that you've experienced, I've got extensive experience with sewers and flooding, and, and within the last three to five years, we've experienced something here in this portion, part of Michigan with the way in which rain falls in these terrible, terrible downpours, that I've never seen flooding in southern Macomb County the way it has, and I see it out here as well. So, I, I don't want to tell you that further development is not making that worse, but it's happening in communities that are built out and have no new, new property.
Alright, very good, thank you, Mr. DeBruin, and we appreciate also your, obviously, your added, your added knowledge in that. It's good to, good to keep adding knowledge to the, to the board, and that's certainly something you bring to the table. Alright, moving us on to Item 8B. This is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, Sections 10.0323C.5B and 10.1603.33A. Now, this is for permanent parcel 0817-451-002. Taco Bell of America LLC is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you please give us your review on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you saw in your packet, this is a property that's owned C2, general commercial. It is currently vacant, it was actually rezoned not all that long ago to C2. They are seeking to put a Taco Bell restaurant with a drive-through on this property. It's on 23 Mile, just east of, just west of Romeo Plank. The applicant is requesting the two variances, as you mentioned, to allow three fewer parking spaces than what our ordinance would typically require, as well as to reduce the required 300-foot setback from the, the call box to a neighboring residential property. You can see on the screen here, we're showing kind of where the parking is in yellow, and the requested setback of 138 feet as opposed to 300 feet. One thing you can't see, and I guess I'll try to move the cursor, and I hope you can see it up there, I think you can. Even though the 138 feet is here, the ordinance is written to the, their property, that's the closest point, which is 138 feet. The actual houses themselves are sitting down in this area. So, the houses, I don't have the number in front of me, but they're a lot further than 138 feet away. That being said, we did do internal reviews of this with regards to the parking. There were no objections from assessing, assessing fire or engineering, and our planning review analyst did note that it is kind of an irregularly shaped property, which did affect the site design with regards to the parking, you know, it leads into that. With regards to the call box, again, there were no objections from assessing or fire. Engineering did point out that it's realistically as far away as feasible, and it's also pointing in the opposite direction of both the roadway, which I think we've learned in recent meetings that that's a good thing, and pointed away from the housing that is next door. We did want to point out too, that it is likely that the, the updated master plan will show that the neighboring properties to no longer be master planned for residential. And also that, an item that we saw relatively recently, the site itself is Zone C2, which allows drive-through restaurants, yet the site itself is less than 300 feet in width. So, there's no way they can get 300 feet of distance from the neighboring property, therefore, creating a hardship that they can't essentially put in a business that is allowed by that zoning category. We did, I left a note on all of your computers up there, we did get an email from the neighboring homeowner, who is in support of this development, has no objections to the variances being requested this evening.
Alright, very good, thank you, Mr. Box, is there any questions for Mr. Box from the board?
The letter, the letter in support that we got, was that for the residential property to the east?
Correct, they own actually the first two properties to the east, just want to confirm.
Mr. Piper, did you have something?
No.
Alright, with no other questions, is the petitioner in the audience? If you are, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
So, I'm Sarah McGowan with the GPD Group, we're Taco Bell's architect and engineer for most of the country. And this is my project that I've been assigned, my address is 1117 Perimeter Center West, Suite W306, Atlanta, Georgia. It's a little cold. I'm, I'm here if you'll have any questions, Mr. Box has been very helpful, so if you have anything that, you know, is on your mind, I'm here to answer any questions.
Alright, very good, any questions for Ms. McGowan from the board? I had one that I was hoping to ask with both of you up. Mr. Box, obviously you've got a, a entry drive on the northeast corner, which I assume is there because of the potential of the development that we are currently expecting in the future to the east. Is that accurate, and is that something we feel outweighs the need for more parking spaces? I'm assuming that if we didn't have that there, we could probably put the other three parking spaces in very easily.
A couple of things, I, I also forgot to point out that kind of this area, as you see behind you, between these two dashed lines, that is all easement for the drain that runs along this property. So, that portion also has restrictions with regards to development. So, right now, they are showing a stub here again, this is not a site plan that they've submitted that we're reviewing tonight. This, they're seeking variances for these items. Whether or not that ends up on their final site plan looking like that, or whether it got punched through in the future to the neighboring property, or they work with the, the Drain Commission and, and who may or may not allow them to build anything on their easement, it could connect to something there. But again, that, that's not really something that is pertinent to the parking or the call box location.
And I know a little more information, so the-
Go ahead.
Mr. Zingus, who is purchasing the property, he'll be Taco Bell's landlord, he's going to own that whole entire-
If you could, I apologize, I think-
No, it's okay.
I wasn't quite picking you up.
I can, I can also talk loud.
I think, and it also slides, so if you want to slide, it might make it easier to-
Okay, so, he is purchasing all of the property, that whole shape, and he has plans to potentially develop the northern parcel? Uh, yeah, there you go, like where the tip is later, so the, kind of the thought process, when the time came, we might do a stub out to connect the two properties, so you could get access to the back of the property.
Yeah, it's a little tough to tell from looking at these plans compared to this, the Taco Bell area is largely right in here. So, there's, there's a lot more property behind this.
Well, Mr. Box, if I could, and Ms. McGowan, you might know this as well, obviously, there, the residential property directly to the east is the large portion, but then there's also a house along 23 Mile Road. Is that house also part of the, the parcel Mr. Zingus is purchasing or owns?
No, it would just be this, the empty grass field.
Okay, the, the dashes there kind of seem to look like it's all one parcel, so I wasn't sure.
The, the drain will serve as the property line.
And that's why, and that's why you're looking to put a drive there, because you expect to connect it to future development there going forward. Okay. Alright, any other questions for Ms. McGowan from the board?
I just have one question.
Go ahead, Mr. DeCosta.
We've learned a lot recently about call boxes and drive-throughs. Is this, what kind of call box, is this a digital call box that the, the decimals can be adjusted?
Yes, it'll be able to be adjusted, and then the inner one, that is where the variance is coming from, is going to be just the mobile go order. So, the traditional drive-through will be the outer lane to the left, and so this one will just have the little call box, and you order ahead on the app, and you, I'll be like, I'm Sarah McGowan, I'm here for my order, and that's it. Like, there's not a full, long conversation.
Okay, so, maybe for Mr. Box, seeing that there is two call boxes, is it still just one variance, or as long as we approve within 135 feet, the other one's good?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have one more question, Ms. McGowan. I don't know how many of this layout you do, but I know typically with Taco Bell or, or companies like that, there's probably standard, generally standard layouts. What's a typical parking count for a building of this size for you guys?
They typically, based on the zoning of the jurisdiction, they'll have around 20. They only need around 11 to function well, so.
Alright, uh, with that being said, we're going to take it out to the public. If there's any members of the public who would wish to speak on this item, please come forward to the podium here, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have. Please keep in mind, it is a four-minute, four-minute time limit, and also that as before, we take the comments and then we answer things if we feel that it's pertinent, or as we see them, we don't answer them when you're up there. So, if we stare at you in silence, we're not trying to be rude. Anyone wanting, anyone want to come up and speak? Seeing none, without any objection, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board. Are there any motions, comments, or motions on these two items?
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming we should do two separate-
I would think it would be correct in this case, yes.
I would make a motion on Section 10.0323.C.5B to authorize the reduction of parking spaces from 28 to 25 due to the irregularity of the lot and the drain easement that's adjacent to it.
Alright, motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
I'll support that.
Supported by Mr. DeBruin, Mr. Piper, please call the roll.
Member Piper says yes, Member DeBruin?
Yes.
Member DeCosta?
Yes.
Member Vostick?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield?
Yes.
That motion passes, are there any motions on the second variance request?
I will also make motion on Section 10.1603.33A to reduce the call box setback from 300 feet to 138 feet. I think it's still in the spirit of the ordinance, the residential property that's there is quite a distance away, and I don't think that causes a hazard to the residents, so I would make that motion again because of the irregularity of the property.
Alright, motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Mr. DeCosta, Mr. Piper, please call the roll.
Member Piper votes yes, Member DeCosta?
Yes.
Member DeBruin?
Yes.
Member Vostick?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield?
Yes.
That motion passes, thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Hope you have a quick flight home to the warmth, all of us envy you, because we're going to be here for a while.
You'll be 35 when I land, which is still warmer than-
That's true.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Alright, that moves us on to item, or yes, Item 8C, which is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, Section 10.0323.C.6. This is for permanent parcel 0818-400025. I don't think I'm going to pronounce the last name of the petitioner, because I'm not going to get it right, but the first name is Francis.
Boji.
Boji, very good, Francis Boji is the petitioner. Thank you for saving me there, I, I try not to pronounce names, I know I'm going to butcher. Mr. Box, could you take us through the review on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This property is zoned M1 or light industrial, it already has a facility on it, as you can see behind you, outlined in yellow, that's the existing structure. The applicant is proposing to add on a little over 22,000 square feet in warehousing on the rear portion of this property. Some, you can see in this aerial as well, this turnaround area here, that was a, a previous fire requirement, similar to the cul-de-sac in the residential neighborhood. That is a turnaround area required by fire. So, by adding on this warehousing, they are unable to have the proper turnaround back there. Fire is requesting a drive aisle all the way around, which is requiring them to seek this variance down to 37 parking spaces when 44 are required. So, you can see on the left there, kind of the existing outline, and on the right, what they are proposing. They are adding some parking in the rear, they're actually gaining nine parking spaces, yet according to the applicant, this is all warehousing, they're actually not adding any employees, just warehousing, but per ordinance, as your building gets bigger, your parking requirements get bigger. So, they are adding nine spaces, and they do, currently, their building size they have now does meet the ordinance by growing. They're not going to have enough room left over to fully meet the ordinance in the future. Assessing had no objections, engineering noted that, again, that this increases for warehousing capacity. No current plan to increase number of employees, doesn't pose any engineering-related concerns. Similar comments from our planning analyst, and at that point, staff has no objections. I did actually find a picture, this picture is from, I want to say October 13th, it was a Wednesday, I did look it up, when we had staff out taking pictures as part of our master plan update. And so you can see, they're clearly not using all the parking that they have, and they're indicating that they're not adding any new employees. So, whether this is an accurate depiction of a regular day there, I don't know, but I, I did find that in our records, that this is just a couple of months ago of what their parking situation looks like.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Box, is there any questions for Mr. Box from the board?
I can also add that I went past there, looked at the property, and I noticed the same thing, the parking was, lot was fairly empty when I was there.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Piper. Anything else? Hearing none, I will take it out to the petitioner, Mr. Boji, if you would like to come up to the center here and state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Good evening, my name is Francis Boji, I reside in Waterford, 3925 Lakefront Street, Waterford, 48328.
Very good.
I don't know how much time I have to explain what I'm doing.
We don't, we don't put a time limit for you, but obviously, there are some reasonable time limits.
I appreciate that, and I understand. Actually, we, we were in Port Huron area when we started our company in 2002. And then, when we started growing, we, we looked for a property to, to really build a new building. And that was five years ago, and then we came to the current location, and I bought this property, knowing that we were growing, then I will have to extend. In my mind, I was going to expand the building within maybe seven to eight years, and four years, now I need it. That's success, and of course, I, I am really proud to be a part of the township here, and I, I get all the support when I built the building, and of course, I, I feel I am going to get the same support, I am, I am expanding. The reason I, I am doing this here, I want to stay where, where I am. Most of my employees were in Port Huron area, some of them, they bought homes in nearby area, and some of them, they come two or three in the same car, because they drive long distance. I have 14 employees, I know, I have no intention to add maybe one or two. I, my, my sales now are about 10 to 12 million dollars a year. I am expecting to be 20 and 30, but the whole expansion will be inside, because now my production capacity is only 50% of what my equipments can produce. So, with what happened now with the supply chain, I have to double my inventory, just so that I have enough ingredients to fill a, a purchase order. And so, I am not adding any equipment now, as I said, I have excess of production and the equipments that I have now, but I have to have more room to get my inventory that I have, I have to, to have because of what's happening. And of course, any growth, as anybody in business knows, and when you grow, you have to have more inventory to sell. That's, that's a part of growing, you know, bigger. And I actually, I tried every single thing with my neighbors to give me an easement, so that I can do that hammerhead that was shown as I had before, nobody will sell me. I mean, my neighbor to the east, my neighbor to the south, otherwise, I wouldn't come for, for this. Because if it wasn't for the turnaround for the fire truck, I wouldn't need any of that.
Alright, very good, sir, appreciate it, any questions from the board? Mr. Piper, did you have one?
No, I'm all set.
With that, I think we'll take it out to the public. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, please come forth to the podium, state your name and address for the record, there's a four-minute time limit, we'll stare at you and answer questions later. Anyone? I see some movement back there, you have anything to say tonight? Alright, very good, and with, with no objections, I'm going to close public comments and bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions, or anything for Mr. Box or, or Mr. Boji?
I would make a motion for Section 10.0323, what is that, Subcheck and C, Subcheck and six?
Yep.
To appro-
Uh, to approve the request to reduce the amount of spaces from the required forty-four to the thirty-seven he's capable of putting in.
Motion by Mr. DeBrun. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Supported by Mr. Piper. Mr. Piper, please call the roll.
Yes, uh, Member DeBrun?
Yes.
Member Piper votes yes. Member DeCoster?
Yes.
Member Fostick?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. I hope your business keeps growing, and, uh, we appreciate you being with the township. All right, uh, that takes us to the end of our new business and on to item nine, which is public comments. Uh, this is for any member in the audience wishes to speak. Um, if you wish to do so, please come forth to the podium. Still have four minutes, uh, and give any comments you might have. Seeing none, uh, we're gonna move on to item ten, which is ZBA member comments. Any comments from the board members this evening?
No.
All right, we're good. Uh, I just had a couple of brief things, uh, I think we mentioned earlier, but we do have officer elections we have to, to take care of. Um, Mr. Box and I had talked about this for this evening. Uh, we avoided doing it 'cause we didn't have all the regular members. Um, I'm not sure when we are next going to have our, all of our regular members. It might be, um, between different schedules. It might be sometime. So, um, I think we're gonna, Mr. Box and I will talk and, and figure out where we, where we stand with that. It might be, uh, sometime. Uh, it might be a short period of time. If anybody has any, any comments on that, um, I'd be open to them. But other than that, we probably would just, uh, leave it with acting positions until we have everybody at full strength.
That's fine with me.
All right, um, the only other thing I would mention, uh, is that, uh, at the last Board of Trustees meeting, uh, we no longer have a liaison of the Board of Trustees, so I can't thank them. Um, we had two reappointments to ZBA. Uh, Ms. Lawson was reappointed, and I was reappointed. Um, one change that was made this time was that my term as the liaison from Planning Commission is now gonna run concurrent with my Planning Commission term, which is good. Um, a couple of us had talked about it. Um, I, I think it makes a lot more sense to tie the two together than to sort of have an opposing force that can force one appointment from, from not happening. I think it makes a lot more sense. Uh, and then also, there's two new members of the Planning Commission, Ms. Smith, who was on the Board of Trustees, uh, several years ago, and, uh, Mr. Meyer Lee, who's been around the township for quite some time. He was on the Ethics Board, and I think he recently retired from Shelby Township. He's a police chief, I think, now somewhere north of here. I'm not exactly sure that I remember which, uh, which municipality. But, um, some reappointments, um, appreciated that from the board, uh, both reappointing, uh, people who were here and, and bringing, uh, good members in to, to help keep everything moving. So, uh, just kind of an update there, uh, and that's all I had. Um, item eleven is Planning Director Comments. Mr. Box, anything this evening?
I was just gonna mention, uh, the, you know, congratulations to those who were reappointed, yourself and Ms. Lawson, who's not here, and, and the Planning, uh, Commission folks that you mentioned as well. And I believe, uh, for the record, Mr. Meyer Lee, I think it's Armada, Village of Armada is, was where he's at now as a police chief. You mentioned the elections. Uh, similar, uh, line of thought for ZBA bylaws. We wanted to take a look, but I think we wanted to wait until the five full-time ZBA members were here to do that. So we kind of intentionally left that off the agenda to start the year, so.
Sounds good. And I would say with the bylaws too, obviously, there may not be, may not be voting, uh, things, but, but Melissa, you know, I think that they'll probably be sent around. If you have any comments on them, please feel free to forward them. Um, I think that's certainly something we should make sure we take comments on.
Uh, and I'll also say, I'm not a hundred percent sure if there will be a February meeting at this point. It, it's kind of up in the air. There's a few items that may get in in time, but the time is running short, so we'll see.
All right. Mr. Van Tiflin, anything from you this evening?
I have nothing.
All right. Mr. Aloya, anything?
Nothing. Happy New Year to everybody.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item twelve, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Piper. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. DeCoster. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That item passes, and at seven twenty-four, we stand adjourned.